And I'm going to ask Bush, Mayor Showalter, if you can lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No, I will. We have no time to carry the schedule tonight, so I will call a meeting to order.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion before we begin the meeting to amend Section 5 of the Agenda of Staff Reports to add discussion by mayor and council, I'm sorry, to add a presentation by Chief Sisson in regards to updating the current mutual aid agreement that we have with the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department to reflect the new sheriff that's been elected.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Ma'am Court?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
I believe that to be six out, so we will move that under Section 5 of Staff Reports. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. We have two items, the council minutes, meeting minutes of January the 12th, 2016, and a monthly bills.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented and amended, as amended.
Second.
Motion in the second.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
It's six out. Monthly bills, any quick questions, or are we going to go straight on things? We approved the council minutes, I believe, in the say's motion. Is that correct? Is that your understanding? We did?
My understanding, with the consent agenda that we approved.
Consent agenda included not just amendments, but the amendment.
Okay, so we're good to go. Thank you very much. And of recognitions, I, we have a very special and honored guest with us tonight, who's retired minister and currently president of Christiansburg Lions Club, Mr. Doug Kane. And Doug, I'd like, we're going to honor your club with a proclamation if you would come forward. Congratulations, I'm going to get over here and see if this thing's on or not. Is it close? That's good, that's good. Proclamation of Lions Club of Christiansburg Week, February 21st through February 27th, 2016. Whereas Lions International founded in 1917 is the largest service organization in the world with over 1.4 million members from over 200 countries who follow the motto "We Serve" and work together to answer the needs that challenge communities around the world. And whereas Lions International serves through community involvement, improvement initiatives, environmental protection programs, children and youth-related programs, international relations programs, as well as a number of health initiatives, including hearing and sight programs and diabetes awareness. And whereas a primary focus of the Lions Clubs across America has been sight advocacy, and whereas each year the Christiansburg Lions Club partners with other local Lions Clubs to provide eye sight screenings to 18 area schools, reaching over 700 students, and investing over $11,000 a year in eyeglasses and eye care. And whereas Christiansburg Lions Club serves the community in other countless ways by supporting local food banks and Montgomery County Christmas store, cleaning up local parks, and offering assistance to those affected by natural disasters. And whereas this investment is further exemplified by supporting the development of community leaders, positive role models, promoting intercultural understanding and cooperation, and providing opportunities for fellowship, personal development, and community service. And whereas the services provided of the Christiansburg Lions Club will continue to positively impact Christiansburg and surrounding communities for years to come. And whereas Lions Club of Christiansburg was chartered February 25th, 1941, and will celebrate its 75th anniversary in 2016. Now therefore be proclaimed that Mayor Michael Barber and Christiansburg Town Council designates the week of February 21st through 27th, 2016, as Lions Club of Christiansburg Week, and show their appreciation for the work of the Christiansburg Lions Club in Christiansburg and surrounding communities. Doug? Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I'll head out, and I'm going to turn the pulpit over to the minister. We've got about an hour, we'll see what happens.
Thank you, Your Honor. On behalf of the Christiansburg Lions Club, I appreciate being recognized by his honor of the mayor and by town council. And also too, I wanted to express on behalf of the Lions Club, to the people of the town of Christiansburg and the county of Montgomery for their support and encouragement. We're celebrating 75 years, we think we're 75 years young.
We're 75.
And we're preparing for the next 75, and so we're grateful for the opportunity. As you read this, I thought, wow, that is really something. We try to do that day in and day out, because our motto really is "We Serve." And so we're grateful not only for that opportunity, but for the support of the community for us. And as a way of celebrating our birthday, we're making a major gift to Montgomery County Emergency Assistance Program as a way to celebrate our birthday. So we think that's one of the ways that we're trying to give back to the community. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. And they meet on the second and fourth Tuesday nights of each month, so we were unable to come and present it, but if you would please pass our congratulations from not only myself, but council and their administrators for the job well done.
Thank you very much. Thank you, on behalf of the club.
Thank you.
It's quite an honor to be able to shake hands with town council.
Thank you, buddy, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to mention one thing before, before he heads out. The Lions Club, I'm not, obviously not a member of the Lions Club, I'm aware of it, I know a lot of the membership at the Lions Club, and I was once invited by Judge Finch, now Brad Finch, to be there to speak about the Safe Haven Child Visitation Centers, but on behalf of the town of Christiansburg, again, and I understand with the mayor that this proclamation, it's a fantastic thing, but what I want to personally tell you thank you for is you all do play a very vital role in the service of, or the commitment to serving our children in the area and throughout Christiansburg and Montgomery County, Palasque County, you all have a membership everywhere, it seems, and it doesn't go unnoticed, although a lot of times it may go sometimes unrecognized. I think that also bespeaks the, you know, the organization itself. You don't want the accolades. I, it's almost, I, you know, I don't even think this is what you're asking for really here today, it's just, I just want to say, from the children I work with, I see the benefit. And it doesn't go unnoticed to those of us that we see that need, and you all feel that need. So on behalf of the children I work with, I really do appreciate the involvement that you all have had with helping to support our children in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. When we screen the children's eyes, we get a chance to talk with them and see what's going on.
Yes, sir.
It keeps us young. We may be 75 years old, but we're trying to stay young.
You were charter members, is that right?
That's correct, 1941.
I know that's not true. Anyhow, all righty, thank you, moving on. Under Citizens Hearings, we have Sue Farah, Director, Executive Director, Montgomery Museum and Lewis Miller Regional Arts Center, to address council. Sue, do you have any backup plans there with you?
I have. I want you to know, we have a number of members of our board over here, thank you all for coming, and we have Lisa Blakely, who's coming for our benefit too, so we're grateful for that. And I'm always, always grateful, and I'm always happy to be here. Best thing I do in my job is get here every year, and thank you all for letting us come back. And I want to just thank you so much for your continued support of the museum. It's awesome, and we've had quite a year with town council, and your support is vital to the life of the museum, so thank you for that life's support, and those of us who are working with the museum are so grateful. We have, I have just so much good news tonight, it's a neat night. I'm glad there aren't 45,000 people waiting to say, because it won't take long, I don't usually, but we have neat news. Early December, we were just notified that we are the recipients of a grant from the National Endowment for Humanities, and we partnered with Virginia Tech to get this grant. It's a real coup for a small museum, and it puts us in a place where, at another point, I think we might be able to look for other support there, which is so awesome for us. But the program is going to be digitization, worked hard to get that word, it's not the easiest one to say, and the grant will provide equipment for us to offer digitization services to the community for treasures. And to start with, we'll have four days in April that will be geared toward teaching the community and offering a day at the library, which we're working with, and over at Tech for this purpose. The equipment will all stay with us, so that in the future, we'll be able to offer this to the community free of charge, probably on an annual basis, we'll have a day, and we'll see how that goes. But there's so many people in this community who value the treasures in their home and in their family, and we feel this is a great service, and everyone who comes will get the little bracelet thing, the jump drive, I think that's what it is. And so we were able to give something to the community, so we're really excited about this. I want to tell you, our next history exhibit, you have a little notice, "Let's Go to the Depot," and we've been working on this thought for a number of years, and we're so excited to be able to highlight Cambria and the impact that the railroad has had on Montgomery County and the museum, so get your kiddies together and come on over. We'll have lots of train stuff, and it'll start, we'll open it officially on March the 10th, and you'll see some more about that, I think. But anyway, that's just a little teaser for you. Little bit of update on some of the things we had last year. Cord, we had kids. We had eight groups of kids through the museum last summer. We were so thrilled, we would not have many children, and we formed a special team, some of them are here, and worked with How to Manage the Groups, and it was really exciting for us. We felt terrific about it, and hope it repeats this year, but I just want to be sure you know we are dealing with children too. We have another successful heritage day, and made some money, made some new friends, got some new members, and that keeps growing, and we're pleased with that whole event, and it keeps happening, so we're happy with that. Bring your families and come. New to the museum this year is off-site galleries for our art. We have gotten some artists who are interested, and we have provided some off-site galleries, and they change a little bit as businesses close and shut down and move and so forth. One was Smith and Sherman's. We have a sculpture exhibit downtown in front of the mall, so go check it out. This one that will be here about six months is a cactus. It will be a permanent exhibit space in that box out in front of the mall, so check it out, and that's one of our exhibit spaces, you just might be interested. We had two scouts, two boy scouts, who earned their Eagle Rank this year at the museum. No publicity has happened yet because their paperwork has not been finished. We were hoping it would happen in good weather, and we could have a picnic out at the gazebo, and that didn't happen, but you will see that in the news when it happens, but we're so pleased that we can offer those opportunities to the young people. And just want to make sure that you know that even with all the help we get from you all and the county and everyone, the things that we do are now really focusing on making money. We hardly, we want to give to the community, but we want to be able to make money with what we do. A lot of energy goes into everything we do, and there are not many of us, so we keep, you know, learning about new ways to earn money. The biggest thing we did last year was with town. We had an event at the museum in June, it was part of the Mountains of Music Homecoming sponsored by the Crooked Road, and thanks to your partnership, we had a very successful day. And it was a first effort for us, it was the biggest thing we've ever done, and we're just so grateful for your help. We also had a great deal of help from the Kiwanis in Christiansburg and the Rotary in Blacksburg. And Lions, where are you? He's calling, "We're going to go after those Lions, they do a lot, we need some more help." So we're going to talk to them. But this was a great event, and we were, we were so, so thrilled with the partnership we developed with the town, and that was certainly a new thing for us. Great news coming, we've been approached by the Crooked Road to Jack Kinsley Wood and Lisa Blakely, Director of Tourism, to be host venue for the Crooked Road Mountains of Music this year, which means we're one of two in the community, and it means that the Crooked Road books and pays for the band and the sound and major publicity, which none of that happened last year. And we're very excited about this opportunity, we think we can do this, and we hope that we can partner again with the town, we will talk about that, you'll have some questions, and we'll be talking about that in just a minute. But we wanted to go downtown, we're very, very interested in helping to bring people downtown and to increase traffic and increase interest in downtown, so we're looking at an opportunity to close the street and have a big day with a number of music groups. We're hoping to get "Seldom Seen," which is a popular group because, one thing, several of the young men are from here. We have three other groups lined up, the Loose Strings, who came last year and everybody loved them, it's a group of five girls, and they're awesome, and Cox and Company, and Olin and Frances Gardner, Olin works with us to help plan, so we're looking at those groups. We'll have beer and wine and food and all that stuff, but we're looking for a real big day, it'll be June 18. I have a few other things to leave with you, you've got a list in front of you of events that we are talking about, and some of them are secure and some are in the works, but we're on a roll, and we have a new board member, Dewey Rotenberry, who's, he's all over this, and he knows everybody, and he knows how to get things done, and he's been very helpful in organizing all of these events. So these are some things we're looking at for this year, and hope to have a real productive year, so that we can come back next year and say good things. I know you have some questions about what we're doing, that Lisa's here, and she will verify the commitment that is involved with the tourism office, and we have some commitments from sponsorships that Dewey can tell you about and so forth, so I'd like to have questions now.
I have some questions, sure.
Ms. Farah, may we ask your board to introduce themselves, we have a new council member and most of familiar faces.
Absolutely, how nice, thank you for that, I'm conscious of your time. You all stand up. I'll tell you, it's Gene Galloway, and Nancy Miller, and Marge Maglin, and Marvy Stein, and Dewey Rotenberry. And Lee, and then Steve. Steve came specially for tonight.
You know, I do want to say a few words, if I can, Mr. Mayor. That, you know, you see, ever since I've been on council, I have preached that so many groups come here and they ask for money, and they say, "We're going to do this, we're going to do that," and a lot of times, we don't see anything out of it. But you can just see on this yellow sheet of paper, this group has said, "We're going to do these things," and they've got it all laid out, and they're going to do these things, which I think is so good, to see a follow-through on that.
Very well said.
On a better point here, too, two of these events are going to be right downtown, which is what we're all looking for, we want to try to get more events downtown, and they want to do that too. So I, you know, I think that, and Dewey, you might have a few more words to say on that, but, you know, this group should be really applauding for efforts and making downtown, you know, a place to come.
Tell them what you think.
Thank you for having us tonight, we so appreciate everything you do. To answer your questions, Steve, I think the impact that we could develop, and we will see at a couple of these events for downtown Christiansburg can be huge. We're really in the early, early stages, but the spark and the fire that is already created about two of these activities, one being the Mount of the Concert, and I've been very fortunate to go ahead and have already have commitments for the bands, that easy, that quick. So word is spreading with that, in that community. I think we'll see, I don't want to project and jinx this, but I think we'll see a thousand plus people, based on what this event has done, and us being one of two events in the county. So we feel honored to do that. There is, if you'll notice down on line number two, the Cruisin', of course, my career of being in the car business is all about a car, and not always selling you something, but with these groups, the gentlemen and ladies that have these showcase their pride and joys, they're looking for a different venue, and just in talking to a couple of the groups, reaching as far to Run Oak, the first estimate that we think we can have is 300-plus cars for Saturday.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
With the Cruze, I've got a guy in town here who wants to help you a lot.
Oh, wow.
Do I have him to contact you, or you, Ms. Farah, or who should he contact?
Either one of us. Have him call the museum and then, yeah, that's awesome.
The local clubs, two of the, two of the showcase local clubs have just, they've just, they're ready, shake a dust off their cars for the ones that come downtown and socialize, walk the streets. If we, you know, there's some ideas we would like to tie with this, and I do, you know, your time, I want to be respectful of your time, possibly showcase some of the town equipment, not only be about cars, be about something where the kids can be a touch of truck, day two. There again, it pulls our community together to where it's just not a bunch of car guys with our fire rescue, again, showcase those pieces of equipment and what we do as a town and county. So that's kind of our vision of what we're seeking, we're looking here.
I believe you have Mr. Echols, don't you?
Yes, Del.
Anybody who's interested and knows about the car business there, Echols has been involved in it for years, and he is already on board for this.
I think one of the comments that I wanted to make, I'm extremely, I was extremely proud when I met with Sue and Dewey last week or so, this Crooked Road Mountains of Music concert, for the past several years, it's always been a Christiansburg high school, it's been poorly attended. They had a, we went last year, and there was a very, very talented young lady as the headliner, and there may have been 50 people there, and it just was kind of a, kind of embarrassing. We think moving this thing to a downtown event, and we all saw the success we had with the gospel singing, and we're looking along those lines and things that would probably be a great thing for us. So I'm glad that you're getting the event, and I believe you told me that there's going to be a lot less of these little satellite events.
Yeah.
So as not to take away from...
Almost half.
Yeah, because I think last year, you said we had over 200 people at the museum for your, you're the part of it.
We did.
And 50 down, 50 at the high school, for the better, for what was the headline show.
Exactly, exactly.
So that's good. Any other questions, any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you all, thank you.
This is where we open it up for our citizens' comments, anybody that would like to come and address council on any matter. We ask that you come forward to the podium, name and address, and address your comments to the chair. So is there anyone that would like to address council? Here you can see no one, we'll move right on to staff reports, and that is Mr. Mark Sisson, our fine chief of police.
I apologize for the late addition to the agenda. As most of you are aware, we have a new sheriff from Montgomery County, so I feel that it is very imperative for us to renegotiate our mutual aid agreements with them and our cooperative agreements. So I've been working with Teresa over the past week to make this happen, and she has advised me that I need to come before council, and that needs to be a voice vote to allow me to initiate the mutual aid agreement with the sheriff and also a cooperative agreement with them. So that is the reason that I'm here tonight.
I sent an email out a little earlier, kind of notifying council that not only has Sheriff Parton reviewed the plan, but the county attorney has reviewed the plan, and Teresa's reviewed everything, and there is a consensus that this is the right amendments and adjustments.
That's correct.
Is now the right time to take action, or do we need to wait for a discussion?
Well, if you make a motion...
I'll make a motion, we empower or authorize Mr. Sisson to do whatever he feels is in the town's best interest to negotiate the mutual aid agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments, any questions, any discussion?
Only question I would have is to the attorney, I take it it's substantially similar to what we've had in prior years, it's just, hate to say, not so much semantics, but let's cleric where we're looking to substitute one name for the other name as far as the sheriff of them.
Yeah, there's no substantive changes, other than change in the pardon's name, basically.
And I want to ask Chief Sisson too, and thus far, we've been discussions with Chief Park, I call him Hank, of course, everybody calls him Hank, but Chief Parton, do you foresee, again, being as smooth as it was working with the sheriff with us well?
I do, it's, we've had a great relationship with the sheriff's department, and I feel confident we'll continue with Sheriff Park.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second, and I believe our town attorney says we need a voice vote on that.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
It would be six out, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask at a future meeting, once that is assigned and endorsed by both, if we could get a copy of that in council as well, Mr. Collins would have a copy of that, and I don't think, Mr. Bishop was present last time we discussed it as well, and we renewed it.
It's been a couple of years since we redid some of that stuff on it, Chief.
2014.
Yeah, so some of them probably missed, yeah, it would be part of a, either a packet for you all, or at least available for your viewing.
Absolutely.
Okay. Under, and let me welcome Randy Wingfield to the table, to the hot seat. Mr. Hills is in the hotter seat in Africa, is that where he's?
Amazon.
Wow, he gets hot, so don't drink water. Anyway, we have a discussion regarding purchase of electronic tablets for council use. Randy, I think you have some updated information on that?
Fred did ask that be added to the agenda. Basically, just to give you an update, Adam is still planning on coming to the next council meeting to make a presentation and present you with options. I think he's got options ranging from at least up to the $20,000 range. Right now, we've only got about $10,000 budgeted for the tablets, based on, I guess, kind of basic tablets with Air cards from last year, although some of the software that was requested, like Microsoft Office for the tablets, can drive the cost up significantly. So basically, if you haven't, we do know that five out of the seven council members have completed the survey, if you haven't, go ahead and complete it. We'll try to compile that into the options that Adam's going to present at the next council meeting. So basically, any of your comments that we get with that, we're going to try to, I guess, kind of come up with a car option of selections for you, so.
I'll be the first, and Mr. Stipes mentioned this, put this on the agenda, and I appreciate it, I sent something out as well, asking kind of where we were at on that, because we discussed this, I think, in December, if I recall?
It's been, it's been about six weeks. It's been a couple of years we've talked about.
Right, right.
It's gotten serious here lately, and...
The one thing I, I mean, obviously what sticks out in my mind is, you just mentioned between $10,000 and $20,000, I believe?
Yes.
And I have responded, I think it's called the Survey Monkey, I believe, is where we could also respond, but this is council, I mean, my thinking on this is, look, and I, again, I probably use technology lessons about this table, which is funny considering, but is that we go, obviously it's something that's got utility, but that's, I can't imagine spending $10,000 on tablets for what I'm going to use it for. I'm going to use it for literally what, for nothing but talent, and that's it. And I mean, as far as it having a Microsoft Office, I don't see that I even have the need for it, unless it has to be accessible to my, if the email is required, or that's a requirement for the email, but...
And that's what's going to happen, Cord, you're going to have to have access to it yourself, and word when you want to open these attachments here on the table.
They've got a, and there's a couple of boards around town that utilize the tablets, and they have, it's called, what's it, Board Effect, which is actually where, it's one of the app, basically, down in the app, and the app itself allows you to synchronize the efforts of council, in other words, we can have, it's almost like what you mentioned with your desktop icons, Mr. Showalter, I believe, in your email, that we can access as a group the same types of things that are probably 90% of what we're going to be accessing anyway. But, but I, again, I think it's a great idea, and I'm glad Brad put it on there, but that just hit me when you said that price tag, and I wasn't expecting $10,000 to $20,000.
I think a lot of it has to do with these, some of the requests, like GIS and the ... I think a lot of it has to do with these, some of the requests, like GIS and the budget document information, there's a lot more than just, I think there's a lot more programs that the average person may not be aware of that it takes to do this.
And I think it kind of depends, you know, on the lower end, some people basically didn't ask for any special software on their machine, and, you know, something like that, we could definitely get close, buy closer to the ten thousand dollars for the tablets.
And how totally are we looking to purchase, not just council, but also for...
One for the manager and one for every council member and mayor, so basically seven, the manager would be eight.
Clerk would not be involved?
Well, we could budget for the clerk, I guess that's kind of a question for council. Michelle Nita?
We're on Board Assistant Manager as well.
Kind of another question. And I guess, I did not fill out the questionnaire myself, although I have access to it. I took it that it was geared more towards council, but, I mean, I could fill it out myself. I think burying up my thought is that we would want the same software on a tablet as what council has. And, you know, we've got Microsoft Office on our machines, if we need to edit, we can put something on a flash drive and work on it here, or we've got it on our machines at home too, so it's not really an issue for us.
It would be a great, I think it'd be a great thing for us to have, because I know just today, this is the smallest packet I have all year, it's mostly thirty pages here that I printed out, and of course, a year we're printing out three or four thousand pages of material easily each.
Yes.
But, I'm glad, I'm glad we're looking at that, but I'm looking for, Mr. Carpe will be here at the meeting in February, so we can discuss as to the utility behind certain apps or certain programs, or what we need, Greg.
Without our input, what would we get?
Well...
If you went to the store yourself and got six of them, what would you get on it?
At the very least, you'd want access to email, also be able to open PDFs, and any Word or Excel files that you're sent. I think those are kind of basics. You know, the mapping, I personally don't necessarily think you need access to our GIS, but I guess it's a matter of opinion. But, you know, simply, simply the tablet with access to internet and an air card, which basically enables you to get out on internet virtually anywhere, talking around a thousand dollars a tablet, just kind of basic there.
I guess what I, and I sent out, did everybody take the survey?
I know I did.
I'm not sure if I did or not.
Okay, definitely take the time to hit the survey. I want to straighten something up, because I keep hearing about this town mapping and how much, I agree, council does not need that, that's not, wasn't my intention, it's my intention that you have these at a, for some of us who aren't very computer savvy, that you have these hot links to where you could go to the Montgomery County GIS, to where you could go, to where you can look at certain maps. You don't need what the planning department does, we don't need that attached here, but something where you, all of us have these preset desktop items, that you can just hit these hot links and go straight to.
Just bookmarks for certain things.
Right, that's it, that's, that was my only intention. It's going to cost several thousand dollars, we don't need that.
That's what that thing, this Board Effect, it's a good app that everybody would have on theirs, and that it allows you to have those hot links, pretty much, it makes it the same for each council member, keeps everything very consistent, and it's a free app, from my understanding, but it's used, for instance, by the hospital ward, used by wards like that, so I figured it'd be very...
My key with Microsoft was, you may want to create your own Excel sheet. I mean, I did that long before Mills and Mudge and that Val started sending out to us, which is very valuable, to where you can compare month to month. I did that before we even had that, so certain council members, you may want to draft something, but you, I know we all take notes, and we all create speeches and things like that, but, I mean, to where it's universal like that, that's why I mentioned Microsoft Suite.
If you have any access...
Microsoft, Microsoft Office or Suite does drop off the cost a good deal though.
I have an iPad, straight up from Verizon, I get everything. We, most localities use Dropbox, like for instance, Town of Benton, they save all their, in fact, I have all your stuff right now on Dropbox, I just basically copied it off your website to Dropbox, and I could scroll through everything, no special things, I go to Safari, I can pull up GIS, I can pull up everything, and didn't need any kind of special software, I just, it's just a real old iPad.
And what is it, how much is that?
This one is about eight hundred bucks, and I, it's just an iPad, and then what I did is I bought the keyboard for it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I can remote in to my office on this with RD Client, it's an app, and I can actually remote into my PC, and the only thing that got me a little, I had to get used to, was using the cursor, using this like a trackpad, because you move the cursor with your screen when you're interfacing with Microsoft Office. But, yeah, I mean, I get, I can, right now I can go right into my office computer like that.
Can I throw something, is this really something we want to take care of during council meeting, or are we having a work session? We're getting ready, well, we're going to have Mr. Carpe Niddy in here at the next meeting to hammer out the details, but my interest in this is, I mean, we're getting into our most paper intensive time of the year with the budget, and all this discussion, I mean, I want to expedite this.
I'd like to hear what, I'd like to hear what Adam has to tell us, and then next week decide if we want to have another work session amongst us, just to, just to hash that out. I don't think we'd make a commitment to it.
Make a little bit more informal situation, where we can get into it, yeah.
And I can, you know, for those of us that are not computer literate, I can probably arrange with my thirteen-year-old granddaughter to come in and show us how to use it effectively.
I guess, Mike, what I'm saying, we've already had a pretty good discussion by now, why can't we all come in an hour earlier, unless we have...
We have a...
We have work session for the work, work list scheduled six o'clock for the next meeting, so we could, we could discuss it then, if you'd like.
I don't think, I don't think we'll use the whole hour on work.
He should be able to bring us some hands-on, or a hands-on item to it.
Okay.
I mean, during the formal session, I mean, we don't need to be creating a work session for us.
Very good.
So that's what we have, on the ninth, then we would add to the task list, and that would be a discussion also of tablets.
Yes, you got that? Okay. Are we ready to move on? Thank you. Next discussion by mayor and council members is the Planning Commission reappointment for Jennifer Sowers, whose term expires February the sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Jennifer's here, she is again to serve as vice chairman, is that correct? They have elected her in advance.
Four-year.
Four-year term.
Unanimously selected as vice chairman.
Very good.
I make a motion that we reappoint Mrs. Sowers to the Planning Commission.
I second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
You know, there is, I'd just like to bring that out, that, I'm not sure if you know it, but she is in the real estate, and so she's, I think that's a very good thing to have someone in real estate on the planning commission, to get that aspect of the whole thing, and that's, that's, I think, Jen, you are the only one, only real estate type person on the planning commission, aren't you?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, and I, I know, I always really appreciated that, that, you know, you had your little voice on knowing what's going on in that area, so that's really another good facet of her.
I will say, for council's benefit, I had, I sat down with Sir Morgan, and I have reviewed the attendance, and it is in line with our policies, so we're good to go right there. So we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That will be six oh. Jennifer, welcome back aboard. Thank you for all you do. Council reports. Mr. Huppert, can I start with you?
Yes, sir. I, I have, I just wanted to make a quick comment here about the snow cleaning this past weekend, and I, myself, thought that just an excellent job by our people, and I didn't get out on the roads on Sunday, but I heard that they were in good shape, and I got out yesterday, and you almost had to look for snow. So obviously, if you would, Randy, I'd pass that on to them, I think they'd really appreciate that. I'd also like to bring out here, the Aquatics Center is going to have five swim meets in the month of February, and council is invited for to them, and I think they're expecting about a thousand swimmers during those five different meets, and of course, Grandma and Grandpa will come along with that too, so it'll be a nice crowd. And then Terry Caldwell asked me to pass on to council if you would be interested, they're going to have paddle boarding, and they had it last week, weekend, and they, she invites all council to come over there and try it, and, you know, think that you'll really enjoy it, and she might even take a picture of your efforts, you know, to get you a good sign.
My wife and her sisters are going to take that, or one of her sisters is going to take that, so.
Is it this weekend, Terry?
We had one Sunday, and I'm not sure...
Next one's in March, maybe?
We had a...
Very good.
That's all I have, thank you, man.
Thank you. Mr. Showalter?
Central Business, or SEBAC, the advisory board, met today, I was impressed with the number of people who showed up, and again, Tacy is one of our co-chairs on there, and of course, Harry, you were there today, and Steve showed up midway through, and it was a great turnout. I was really concerned how many people we were going to get today, because, you know, with the holidays, but, and Randy, thank you for, Randy had a lot of information, and so did Lisa, that was, Lisa pretty much dominated the meeting with the tribe, Virginia Grant, that we're looking at getting, but just want to let you know, we're starting to, it was nice to have all these people here, we're starting to get our feet underneath this again from the holidays, so again, we expect some big things coming from the Central Business Advisory Committee.
Okay, anything else?
Other than that, go to one of these meets, they're neat, swim meets.
Yeah, they really are.
Good kids.
If you haven't been, I challenge all of you to go, it's amazing. Mr. Stipes?
I'd like to give an update, and actually, an unbelievable announcement last week, we heard about HB two, this has to do with our transportation system, but the House Bill two, which is the complete paradigm shift that the House has taken, it's been seventy years since they revamped their system, and they're doing it now completely based on objective scoring, and there were over four hundred projects presented, Christiansburg submitted, I think, three projects, or was it maybe more than that, maybe four or five?
HB two.
HB two.
We submitted the, really, three projects ourselves.
Three main ones. And I don't want to belabor the point, but I'm in this business, and I can tell you, there, it is scarce, the money is scarce, we're talking about fourteen county districts, Salem District has fourteen counties, including places like the city of Roanoke, I mean, there are some, some baby chicks that want worms, okay, there's a lot of, there's a lot of competition for forty-five million dollars over six years, that's all there is, forty-five million dollars over six years for fourteen counties and major metropolitan areas, but what happened last week, they did, the sausage making is nearing its completion, the ranking, and out of these four hundred projects, here in Salem District, there is about roughly twelve projects that were identified for funding in the Salem District, and two of them are in Christiansburg. There's no other place that has, I mean, this is amazing, actually, and the final foot hasn't fallen, this is the recommendation to the Commonwealth Transportation Board, Mr. Robert Fraylon, or, excuse me, Mr. William Fraylon is our representative for Salem District, and he has complete latitude to call an audible, so we'll be watching the Commonwealth Transportation Board very carefully over the next couple of months as they finalize their list, it should be done in April, and they'll take final action in June, but I do suspect that at least one of those projects, if I had to go to Vegas and bet, I'd say that at least one of those projects will make, make the final list, and those projects, the two that made the list are our connector, connector from Pepper's Ferry to Cambria with the roundabout, and the other project is our North Franklin Street improvements, corridor improvements, which, it's just amazing, actually. So if I sound excited, I didn't prepare a speech, but when I saw that, my jaw dropped, because I'm in the business, and the positioning for these funds is amazing, and to have two make the cut is amazing. So anyway, stay tuned, but it's a very exciting time for our town, as far as, you know, these transportation improvements, we finished one fourteen, we've got the bridge over the Huckleberry, and we're marching on in this corridor. For those of us that live in that part of town, it's be a huge asset to have that connector. So, sorry to take more time, but that's very exciting.
That's great news. Councilman Hall?
Just a couple of things to mention, the snow removal this past weekend, I got compliments over the weekend about how quickly it was done, how quickly the sidewalks were cleared off, I think Mr. Collins sent an email as well, he got some very similar comments, but we were very impressed, it seems like everybody was impressed. I do want to mention, though, one thing, is as many phone calls that I've received, they were very appreciative of the efforts of the town. On the same week, midweek, I had calls that were nonstop incessant, and I reached out to the mayor, reached out to the members of council about what we were doing in preparation for the, basically, inch, inch and a half of snow, whatever we got that was glazed, that completely closed roads down, police department was very proactive, and they closed roads down for public safety concerns, and I know that some surrounding the counties treated, we decided not to treat, I understand we've got emails, and there's been some discussion about the road temperatures, the air temperature, when you treat, when you don't treat, it just seems to me that the surrounding counties that did treat, that it served those communities very well, and we had multiple, we had, it seemed like hundreds of people that were either stranded, or there was accidents, and then they had to walk, a lot of them part of the high school, they would walk to Brad's neighborhood or my neighborhood, and I just think, I, we do a great job, and I think maybe we're all spoiled because of the effort and the job that we do do in snow removal, but, but that was one thing that was brought to my attention by numerous members of the town, and my wife and daughter were also people that were stranded, walking from the high school all the way back to the house, so of course, I heard about it on a personal level as well. In regards to the, of course, Recreation Commission, we have our next meeting, first week of January, Mr. Neal, I know, should be completing, very close to having, getting these renditions completed that we can start to look at, that, again, I always say it kind of adds color to the black and white photos that we've got, and I think it's going to make this whole Trimmellison property become more and more real to each of us as we move forward, and in addition, the, I think each of us received an email from, I cannot recall the lady's name, but in regards to the town becoming involved in county affairs, and I want to touch on that for a minute, because it hits home with me on a couple of levels, but obviously, there's been a lot of things going on with the judicial issues, that's county, county's dealing with that as the county sees fit, and Montgomery County Public Schools, obviously, we, as I've already said, we don't have control of the Montgomery County Public Schools, and, but also, though, I would hope that citizens would feel comfortable coming to council and talking to us about those issues. If they affect the town citizens' day-to-day life, then I think that we have to listen to it, and I think we should listen to it, and that is their right during a citizen's comment period, regardless if we can do anything about it or not. And as we've seen, the reality too is that, and it's been mentioned, I mean, Mr. Showalter and I, when we dealt with the parking right issue, it was brought to the attention, council got on board with it, we presented it, and I think it helped get the ball rolling initially, when we thought that was a public safety issue, so I, I don't know if we'll be hearing a lot more about it, it just seems like there's a lot of things going on in the county right now, all around us, but in regards to the public school system, and the public school situation, there's been some discussions, I've not talked with Chief Sisson directly about it, so I don't want to implicate him at all, but in discussions with, against members of the sheriff's department as well, there's a lot of concerns about public safety with those kids in the mornings, if they swap them, and there's been a lot of studies done, most recently, twenty fourteen, by Kentucky University, and the citizens, and our citizens here in town of Christiansburg showed up in force, en masse, at the last school board meeting, I think they were there until one o'clock in the morning, it was late, but they're concerned about their kids, and frankly, I had no problem with them sitting there and making this board super, I'm sorry, the school board sit there until one o'clock in the morning to listen to those concerns. It involves their kids, they ought to be listening. But we've been asked, and I've been asked, about, you know, what we plan to do, and obviously, my comments to them have been, we really don't have a role to play, I mean, individually, I've talked with members of the school board about my feelings on it, and again, I think it is a, I disagree with the decision to change the times and swap this, I think you're just simply changing a, putting the burden from one to the other, but I, I liked that email that we got, I understand we can't do anything really about it overtly, but I'm glad that, I hope our citizens would feel comfortable approaching us if they have issues that are greater than simply the town of Christiansburg, but that's all I have to report.
You know, I, aren't they going to make a decision at their next meeting, and I think that's going to be on February second, is that correct? And I think that's going to be on February 2nd, is that correct?
They are supposed to. And I'm very optimistic. I think we have a, I think we hit the, it was knocked out of park with the new superintendent. I think his open policy and the way he's approached it, I don't think you could have got a more upstanding individual who cares about the citizens and the kids. So again, whether he has a role to play in this, it's the school board, not him. But I think he's, I liked what he had to say about giving people their opportunity to speak and letting them have their voice. It's very important.
Okay. I think so. Councilman Bishop? I don't have anything from the fire and rescue. Okay. You can report. Councilman Collins?
Yes, sir, I got it. A couple of things. First thing, you get the planning commission. And since we lost Mr. Hubbard, we're down a one person if you want to maintain 11 people on the commission. So, the other thing is that I want to try to fix the problem that we have in town. It's ridiculous for somebody's house to adversely affect the value of somebody else's house. And the building code, there's a maintenance code in there. And I'd like you to ask Mr. Heinlein to come to one of our next meetings and give a little presentation on that because we can make these people fix their homes up. If not, we'll take them to court. You know, there's no sense in my house affecting his house. That's the most money that we spend in our life and it needs to be corrected.
Okay. Mr. Collins, thank you. I think that that is a very slippery slope, Mr. Collins. I think if they had the money to fix it up, they would probably fix it up. So I'm not sure that it does any good to take them to court to make them fix it up, but they can fix it up. But anyway, that's, we have discussed this and there are some issues that we can do. And I think that's something that we can get Mr. Heinlein back. He has presented a program or two on that in past years, so it would not hurt to have a refresher. And I sympathize with the Independence Boulevard, Cambria area and all the wrecks down there. And we have researched it, and I talked to Chief Sisson this morning, and I believe, Mark, you've had conversation with Ricky and the boys to, about moving that particular stretch a little bit further up the priority line. So they'll be looking at, and as they said, we always, we learn something every year in that first snowfall that we thought we, that we didn't know, we didn't know. So anyway, that's pretty, that's pretty much it. I will be traveling to Richmond next Friday to sit in on planning the next BML conference. So.
At the beach?
At the beach. So if any of you have any, I will tell you, I think we're going to, we're going to cut it down today.
I have one thing to mention about that. I'd love for you to bring it up, if you don't mind. And I think I can speak for most of council on this.
You normally do.
I will, I will.
Does it have something to do with a blue house?
No. But no, last time I felt like that, and Brad helped me out, and I wish Jim was here, too, there was one or two particular sessions which I couldn't find a single thing that in any way had any effect or had anything to do whatsoever with the town. And we basically sat there, the closest we came to it was Panhandle. And I thought, man, what is it? We've had four sessions and not a single one. But if they, if they could ensure that, I mean, I don't know how you say this tactically, but if they, it could be geared towards hot issues, hot topics that are facing us right now, I think would be great, I think it'd be great to have a one or two-part session again on stormwater. It always, I think it's always beneficial. But we went to another one, Mr. Mayor, I think Brad and I went to this one, too, about the efforts in which to raise, I think, capital for improvements in town and how to do that marketing and branding. And it seemed like really that it was more or less them asking us what we were doing as a communities. And we kind of were, it all, it became more of a panel discussion than it did a directed discussion. So I'd be looking for something that really helps us to fine tune some issues with the town. And maybe the VMA wouldn't let people submit topics throughout the year.
Well, that's, that's part of what the role in planning is, my role in helping them plan it, is so if you have, and I don't have to have that answer by.
You know it, you know.
I have a general idea.
Do they send out a survey to all?
It's when you go to the, usually at the, at the end or within the packet, there is a survey. Now, I'm going to suggest they do more of a survey.
Right up front.
Online survey type, you know, for those that attended or see what's going on. So, yeah, they provide that, and most of us are just so ready to get home that so many times we don't take the thing, and we're not really doing a service by going down. But that's one of the things, and I will know more and will let you all know by email as to things we can do. But if there are some really good, I mean, these are, these are things that we need to concentrate on, and I'm sure other towns, our size and smaller, have the same issues.
That's right. I think a lot of it, too, I mean, as some of our department heads, if there's things that are, again, hotbed items that they're hearing in their discussions, especially you all, when you have your lives on discussion, Mr. Showalter and yourself, Mr. Mayor, if there's things that are affecting us as a region, I think would be, again, very important.
Okay. Well, that's what I will do. I'll let you know what happens off of that thing, and we'll try to get a lot more input. Last year was just kind of a last-minute type thing, so.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You said that you guys went to a class on the Panhandling?
Well, no, we, we, I'd be honest with you, we, myself, Mr. Van Hoosier, Mr. Stipes, went to Hollywood Cemetery, and we toured that instead of going to the packet.
Doesn't teach you how to do it, Terry. I'll just tell you that right now. Okay. Town managers' reports.
Glad Brad did bring up HB2 applications. Like you said, we did receive funding for, well, tentatively, the approval to receive funding and inclusion in the six-year plan for North Franklin Street and Cambria Street intersection. Phase two, actually, of the connector route, which phase one actually included the roundabout at Cambria Street. Phase would basically be from Cambria to 114 would be phase one. Phase two is from Cambria to North Franklin. And like I say, so I think VDOT is going to have to, I guess, reconcile the fact that the roundabout would be in phase one, they're going to have to shift it to phase two, if that's the one they want to fund first. Either that or we'll have to work out trying to do them both at one time. But we did receive a large amount of, I guess, potential projects in the region. I certainly think we did.
We made more than our fair share.
I certainly think it's way more. I had several people at VDOT say you wouldn't get anything other than the North Franklin Street project. And the NPO applied for the money for the grant, for the, for the ramp coming off the bypass to connect into the connector route. That was actually NPO, they applied for it. But that's small, relatively small.
That's probably what we hear about, just about the motion town is as far as road issue or road connector.
You hear about it some. I think I probably hear about the light at North Franklin and Cambria as much as.
I'll tell you about that right now.
Okay. Just to remind you, I guess we want to do pictures of council at some meeting coming up, and we would like to do those hopefully at maybe the next meeting. We should have a few minutes before, prior to the next meeting, if that's possible. We'll try to send a reminder if we're going to do it before the meeting. Does that sound good with everybody?
I thought we were going to get one out of Tuck Berry Bridge. We talked about a casual, a casual picture more so than any of yours. So let's, do you have a picture, Mr. Collins, and can you provide a picture to go on Facebook?
I already have.
Okay. So, I mean, those are pretty much updated.
But I got to make one comment. Mr. Showalter asked me if that was my glamour picture.
Me, it was glamorous, or old and milky.
I've seen a lot of pictures of myself, and I can't ever say I've seen a glamour picture of myself.
I think my picture is probably from my seventh grade prom. I'm not sure, they are all, do need updating, but.
You have a boa?
It is just a certain way.
Hey, would hail broom, Jeff, it's all I think. Anyway, all right, I'm sorry.
Do you want to do pictures at next meeting, or how would you want to handle that?
I think it'd be nice to have both formal and informal pictures.
So we'll do a group photo here, plus any, anybody that wants to update their face shot.
So we're planning on more formal pictures then, before the next meeting?
Right.
If you can, maybe try to get here at least 10 minutes, maybe 10 minutes early.
Finally.
We have the work session scheduled for six. If you could maybe get here 10 till six, it'd be nice.
Small fish.
10 till six. Henry, could y'all get 10 till six?
Glamour stuff.
10, six.
Send an email to.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, let you know, we received a local foods, local places grant, and we'll get technical assistance and also $20,000 for that. And the grant is kind of written centered around the Farmers Market in downtown. It can be used for physical improvements like structures. It can be used for things like marketing and advertising. It can be used as match for other grants. It can't be used for kind of general operational, such as salaries. But other than that, it's fairly open what it can be used for.
Is that through the state or through federal?
It is EPA grant in cooperation with Appalachian Regional Commission.
All right.
But I think that does open the board to some more money down the road, too, so.
Can I make one final suggestion after?
Got one more thing. Set a public hearing for a conditional use permit. It's for commercial garage and towing service at 980 Roanoke Street. That's the former Haynes well drilling property. And we recommend, that's in the I-2 district, recommend that be set for March 8th, council public hearing.
Same move.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That'd be six oh. Is that it?
Yes.
Going back on this, you know, the grant, there was a, they recommended a steering committee.
Yes.
And one of the, anywhere from four to six people. And Randy and I talked about it this afternoon, and I think that the grant people indicated that the market manager.
They suggested having the market manager as one of the committee members. They were, they suggested having, you know, some staff and maybe some people from CBAC on the committee.
We talked about, just as a suggestion, going with the committee of four at this point, with Tacy on it, Tacy's on it, and.
You mentioned me, Sarah Belcher from Farmers Market, Pamela Ray from Health Department, Social, and also Tacy.
That's kind of what we're thinking about. And they'll have to do some type of a plan to, they have some part in the finalization of that grant, but we, there's a teleconference or an audio conference or something that.
We'll have to have a, basically, audio conference with them. The steering committee will. We'll have to have public work sessions where there were like 50 or so people from the community to try to kind of brainstorm and come up with an action plan for the money, how we're going to spend it.
So with council's permission, I would like to appoint that steering committee.
Would there be anyone from, I mean, not affiliated with the town, just a member of the public as well?
Well, yeah, Pam Ray, Dr. Ray from the Health Department, and Tacy's planning commission, so zoning and all, so.
Mike, can we get Dave or Christina or Dave Baird on there as well? It just adds to the conversation. And I actually mentioned there are CBAC that our Farmers Market Committee could act as a steering committee.
Well, I think that's, we have a committee of about, we have a Farmers Market Committee of about 10, and that's more so than I feel comfortable. We can, we can discuss filling two other posts, but the two other positions, I think the, the initial seed group to get us started, I'd like to recommend those four, and if we have time in between. We've got to have something to get started to get the, get into that conference, so.
When does that have to be completed by or determined?
We, I think it's fairly open-ended, but they want to have the workshop sometime in spring.
So we'll get time. All right. We'll, we'll discuss, I'll take any, any comments on email or whatever additions to.
Well, if you would, just send out what you're thinking, those four members are, and then I guess we can all contribute a little bit to it.
Sure. Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
May I make a comment? Sure, Mayor. With council's support, I would like to ask Mr. Wingfield to, for staff to develop a, the mayor, but we need, I think we need to develop a resolution to request from our two Commonwealth Transportation Board members, Mr. William Fraylon and Mr. Court Rosen, who's a large member right now, but is not running for reelection, I understand, but he will be on the board. He is on the CTB right now. But I would request that we draft a resolution, as we did for 114 when the governor was developing his hot list and we hit on that. But I would ask that we develop a brief resolution expressing our support for the preliminary announcements. And I would also request that we prepare that resolution for all seven signatures of council, the mayor and six council members, to personally sign that. And I know when I get something that's handwritten in the mail, that if all council members were to sign that, it would mean something and would reinforce our support.
What are those determinations to be made, Mr. Stipes?
I think in April, they don't take it until June, but April is, they're working through it between now and April. There's some jockeying going on. And like I said, I would like to think we'll get funding for both projects, but there's still some wrangling to go on between now and then. And I think a well-timed resolution in their hands with our signatures on there will reinforce. It's very personal when you get something that's hand-signed.
Is that simple?
Yeah. And we did this, we did this before 114 came up and got that right in front of the governor and also our Commonwealth Transportation Board members, and we got $14 million.
Yeah, I would second that. I think that's a good idea. Anything, anything more we can put out is good.
Yeah, would it be, and that's a great idea. I'm glad you, you mentioned that because, I mean, for Tech's new interchange, they actually reached out to us to put a resolution together. And we did. Would it help any to have our, our local delegates like Greg Abib and Nick Rush do